That's the one that you sent. Okay, well, I don't know. I thought it was.
I come to this.
Right.
At the hospital. Working at the hospital. Move the desk. One got out and moved the table. Probably bad. If you come back up. Oh, he is a good thing. He can have a cool. I guess a real.
I'm just trying to see if he doesn't look like.
Maybe this crap will be open. We had some point. If we ever gonna sit up there on the.
It's probably been.
The same bench.
But she thinks he didn't send me a.
So I'm just trying to write my. My condolences, but I'm not gonna put all that.
Thank you.
We hear from.
Done both. Yeah, I think she's got her second.
Fred, he didn't say anything?
No. He just said my friend. That's all. I can ask him.
Well, you. When I say I'm gonna send you a picture.
I didn't even look, you know, something else.
Yes.
I understand that a lot more people. Deal with the mask. Like the anxiety and feeling that you feel like in those larger social settings kind of go all the way along. She made it through. She's got the hand body now.
Do we? Yeah. I don't know what it's about. Where were we? Uh, what are we just supposed? The other year? I should.
I did. A little sore. I just got it today. We'll call to order the City of Douglasville's City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is April the fifteenth. We will have our invocation by the esteemed Pastor Artley. And after that, we will have the Mayor Pro Tem lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation.
Esteemed, I'm gonna have to add that to my title now.
Doctor.
In Paul's letter to the Romans, he writes, "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace as you trust in Him so that you may overflow with hope by the power of the Holy Spirit." Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, I just ask that you lay your hands upon the city council tonight, Lord, that you bless them, that you be with them, that you give them the strength and that you give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that they have to make. I thank you, Lord, for their service to the city, and I ask that you bless all those that come tonight. I ask that you bless them and give them safe travels as they all, when they go home. And Lord, I just ask that you be here now and that we can feel the spirit in this room as we go throughout the meeting. And we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ma'am. I will. I told Ms. Tate, anytime you need somebody to fill in, give me a call and I will be here to pray with you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem for leading us in the pledge and Pastor Artley. We appreciate you and thank you so much for being the Chair of our Planning Commission as well. Thank you for your service to the community. You're welcome. You're from United Methodist Church. Um, we do not have any presentations, but I will go through the protocol for the meeting and then we will get into the agenda. We kind of have a lengthy agenda this evening, so we will, um, go through it as quickly as we can, but take care of the business of the City of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville's Legislative Work Session. I'm Douglasville's Mayor Rochelle Robinson. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in whole or in part by teleconference. We do have one elected official who is joining us virtually. And during this public hearing or public hearing for comments from citizens and delegates, you'll be allowed to do so via Zoom software. And I will ask that the council member when I call your name, that you will respond in the affirmative that you are indeed here and you can hear me, Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
I'm here, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if you, I know you sound like, um, the weather changed with allergies, so if you need to go, let us know as well. Um, this is an open meeting of the Douglasville Mayor and City Councils being conducted by teleconference consistent with the Official Code of Georgia annotated section fifty dash fourteen dash one G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of the coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID-19 illness. That section, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows for local governments to meet in whole or in part by teleconference in the event of an emergency, so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software, as shown on the city's website, describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on Monday at six PM, Monday, April the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. Do we have anyone that's joining us virtually to make comments? Ms. Jackson, Assistant City Manager.
Do you have group applicants that would be online to speak virtually?
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. Just a few protocol issues I'd like to go over to make you aware of. Um, and after that, we will get into our agenda. I will ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on the individual or or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will request that you not continuing to speak. Only one person will talk out of time, of course. Please do not applaud or react to speakers or speak from the audience or cheer or carry on conversations with anyone in the audience to be disruptive during this meeting. I remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during, um, the public hearings. If you have any printed material, we ask that you would please present that to our Assistant City Manager. I think that's Assistant City Manager back there. Uh, to my right and your left, and she will pass that out to the council. If you have a cellphone, electronic device, any of those social media things that we communicate with now, telephones or whatever, cellphones, you put those in silent mode. I'm saying telephones. I was at the museum today and we saw old telephone. Young people don't even know what it is anymore. But, um, electronic devices, if you please put those in silent mode so they will not be disruptive. The agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then that person representing the agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation, and you'll present your information at that time. Myself and council members will possibly ask questions of the applicant so that will help us make our decision on next Monday. After that, the committee chair will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of twenty minutes for those in support of agenda items and twenty minutes for those in opposition of those particular agenda items, and each person has five minutes to present, unless you have more people than four or five. You can split up your time three minutes a person, but, um, the totality, you have twenty minutes each side. And there is a speaker card that you should have filled out if you'd like to talk about any agenda item. And after you've done that, please give that card to, uh, the Assistant City Manager, I mean Assistant City Clerk. And, um, when you come to the microphone, please give us your name and address for the record so that we'll have that, um, when you approach the microphone. Each person has one opportunity. This is not a question or debate, uh, format. It's really just here for us to receive the information and make our decision. And please address all of your comments to the Chair. I know that's a whole lot of talking, but those are, um, all of the comments and protocol for the meeting. And again, if there is an item in this agenda where your comments or your concerns are not covered during the time of comments from citizens and delegates, you may come forward and present yourself and give, you have five minutes to speak. So now we will move on with the agenda as it is printed. And our first agenda item is Economic Committee, is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then, um, to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items. It seems as though we spoke of these just a moment ago in our committee meetings, but we'll go through them again for the. I have no idea why that, how that is going off.
I know mine does that too.
Phone call on my iPad in my life. Um, so finance. First item is adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty-one general fund budget. Ms. Callen shared with us in our committee meetings what that involves, and we do have it, uh, on our laptops. If you'd just give us a, an overview quickly if you can, Ms. Callen, just for the essence of time. This is all that we have going on tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Karen Callen, Finance Director, sixty-six ninety-five Church Street. The budgetary effect of this budget amendment is zero for every line item that was over budget. We were able to offset it with a line item that had excess funds. Um, it involves the Police Department, debt service payment reclassification, and I would say the main, uh, one of the main items in the other group is replacement of the jockey pump at West Pines.
Does anyone know what the jockey pump is?
I don't know what that is.
I mean, obviously, it's something that's, that's much needed. I just have never heard of that being called a jockey pump.
I thought that was like the races or something.
And it's irrigation jockey.
Has something to do with irrigation, I'm sure. Okay. And that, that time is coming up as we begin to see our, uh, our grass is green up. They'll be needing some irrigation. Okay. Uh, questions, comments of that particular item? Uh, Dr. Burdanley, did you have any comment or question?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, then we will vote on that on Monday. Thank you, Ms. Callen. We'll move on quickly to, uh, item B. Adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty-one multiple grant fund budget. And I believe that, uh, Mr. Byrd is going to help us with that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shane Byrd, County Manager, sixty-six ninety-five Church Street. Uh, as mentioned previously in our committee meetings that were held earlier, we're essentially amending our original multiple grant fund budget for the Riverside Parkway Bridge. It's a rehabilitation of that bridge. We started out with a budget of six sixty-two nine oh two. That was our original construction estimates. And recently, with an Elsie Whitford contract, we have, uh, an obligation to increase that budget for that contract plus additional construction management services with AE Com Technical Services. There is an eighty-twenty split between the construction costs. Just wanted to highlight that. So eighty percent will be reimbursable through the Georgia Department of Transportation and a twenty percent obligation from the general fund. So those are transfers into our multiple grant fund for a total amended budget of nine hundred three thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Just, uh, just a general statement here. I believe that we've seen the project grow by probably close to thirty percent. But how many years have we been working on this?
Oh, goodness. Uh, it was in process when I first started here in twenty thirteen, I believe. So it's been quite the, uh, quite the project that's come into fruition.
Makes perfect sense why it's increased then. Questions, comments? Dr. Burdanley?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we're glad to see this hopefully come into fruition quickly, and we appreciate your, your help with that. We'll take this up on Monday night for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all that we have under Finance tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Finance Team. We'll move on then to the next, um, agenda item, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. The first item is appoint Ms. Antoinette Wright to the Douglas County Community Service Board to fill an unexpired term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Chelsea Jackson.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, sixty-six ninety-five Church Street. Earlier today in your committee's meeting, you did interview Ms. Antoinette Wright to be appointed to the Douglas County Community Service Board to fill an unexpired term that expires by next year on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. There are no other individuals that would like to be appointed to this board at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So we'll, um, take this up on Monday. Um, would anyone object if we put this on the consent agenda? I thought I'd like to add this. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would like to add it to the consent agenda. Item B is to adopt a resolution to approve and adopt the Community Development Department's Guide to Requesting the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, which is also GICI. Low how, low income housing tax credit, letter of support and to provide for the due dates in application year twenty twenty-one. Ms. April McDown.
April McCown, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. So what you have in front of you are three separate attachments. One is going to be the resolution that would enact us to move forward on a GIC process with, um, applications. You'll also have, um, the GIC checklist, which is also attached. And then you'll also have the, um, the scoring methodology in which staff would score internally and provide the recommendations based on what, uh, is stated in the resolution. So we have received our alumni status. I know you've heard about GIC. There is a couple of individuals who served on the GIC, uh, board or on the GIC, uh, team here locally. So I can take questions if you have any.
Thank you, um, Ms. McDown. Just have questions. Um, we discussed this a couple of months ago and we, um, there were a lot of the mayor and council. We had some comments in regards to the, um, tax credit application. So I see that those, um, it has been tightened a little bit, um, based on our recommendations. Does anyone see anything that, um, was not added? Okay, so Ms., um, I just have a question, Ms., um, to April. Once, um, you, this is submitted, do you have any applicants at this point, um, that you are familiar with?
Yes, so we have two individuals, or I should say two firms, that are interested or have expressed interest. Um, however, they are pending, um, with this application. They, they do know that we're formulating a process right now.
Okay, great. And the deadline for this would be, um, May? The applications would need to be submitted. Is that by May twenty twenty-one?
So May twenty twenty-one is gonna be DCA's deadline. It's the last, uh, two weeks of May for their GIC applications throughout the entire state. However, we've internalized a deadline. We've condensed it just a tad to fit this year's mold, so it will reflect something a little bit different, uh, which is in the resolution. Um, so we're condensing it to where, um, they are required to submit applications by, um, April the twenty-ninth. Will be our due date here in the City of Douglasville.
Okay, great. So are there any questions or comments from our mayor or council members? Okay, if not, I would also like to add this to the consent agenda if there are no objections.
I don't see any. Dr. Burdanley?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is all that I have tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We'll move on then to item number eight, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Adopt an ordinance to repeal the section two dash fourteen of the city charter and to amend the section two dash three six four of the Ethics Code of the City of Douglasville to allow the Ethics Board to review conflict of interest complaints. Enactment two of two. Ms. Woodward.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. Glenn Woodward, Staff Attorney for the City of Douglasville. Um, this item has come before the city council a couple of times, and I do not have any updates at this point. But if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay. Mayor and Council, have any questions?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay, Council. Madam Mayor, if, uh, if the council pleasure can put it on the consent agenda for minus, yeah?
I see heads nodding, Mr. Chairman. I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. Personnel and Organization. Item A is authorize the mayor to sign a staffing agreement with People Ready Inc. to provide professional employment services and fill vacant city positions. And, uh, Brian Westfield will be presenting this.
Brian Westfield, Human Resources Manager, sixty-six ninety-five Church Street. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so we're here to present information on a, uh, staffing agreement with People Ready. Uh, we're looking to fill some critical positions in our Public Services Department. Uh, this staffing agreement will target specific, uh, specialties. We're looking at the commercial sanitation driver, sanitation driver, laborer, refuse collector and equipment operator. Uh, you should have a copy of the agreement in your, in your packets. So, uh, with this agreement, uh, i- if it is approved, we intend to move swiftly to, to fill these positions in order to ensure that Public Services is, uh, meeting the operational needs for some upcoming events, recycling, those type events. Subject to your questions. More than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, before I ask my question, uh, anybody that would like to, uh, get a comment in or a question? Yes, Madam Mayor?
I had a quick question. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you, Dr. Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
How are the, how are they looking? I mean, the, the pool for vacancies or applicants? I know that a lot is going on in cities now, and these are critical positions that we're looking for.
Madam Mayor, are you talking our, our current vacancies?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we're looking at a total of ten positions, and that's a contingency estimate based upon people coming, people going. So we're looking at ten positions we're looking to fill. Specifically, uh, two commercial sanitation drivers, uh, three sanitation drivers, two laborers, two refuse collectors and one equipment operator.
Okay, and we kind of have turnover in that office. Do you think we'll be able to secure those individuals?
I do. In our conversations with People Ready, uh, they have given us some estimates, uh, of who's available and also given us timeframes where, uh, if this, uh, agreement is signed, we should be able to, to move pretty swiftly to get those positions filled.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Westfield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, anyone else, uh, here? Councilwoman Burdanley?
No, sir, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so we fill these positions using, um, uh, this company and, uh, and then another opening. How quickly, if, if another opening appears for whatever reason, whether it's one of their folks or one of the other folks that's working for the city, how quickly, uh, do those positions get filled, uh, once they're on board?
Yes, sir. So it depends on the position. If it's anything dealing with the driver or equipment operator, they would need two weeks advance notice.
Okay. And so they, these folks are already trained, uh, or are they gonna be trained in addition to whatever training they received once they come on board?
Great question, sir. They were come already trained, ready to go.
Okay, that's good. Good. Okay, any, uh, any other questions or comments? Like to place this on the consent agenda for, for Monday, if that's okay?
Looks like it's a go.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Wright, Westfield, I mean, uh, and then, uh, item B is authorize the mayor to sign the request for CareHere to participate in COVID-19 Vaccination Administration to authorize CareHere to provide COVID-19 vaccine services. And Ms. Austin Bing will be, present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tia Austin Bing, sixty-six ninety-five Church Street, Human Resources Department. This item before you is an amendment to our original agreement with our Wellness Center, uh, staff, CareHere, Premise Health Company. And this amendment, um, will allow us to be able to, um, vaccinate, um, our employees, dependents, as well as any other, um, people that we deem necessary to receive this vaccine, to include our part-time employees, mayor and council. Um, this, this particular amendment that we have in place, CareHere is already staffed and ready to begin to administer, um, the vaccine. These, uh, will be done by appointments only. And we will work with CareHere to, um, track our vaccinations, um, for our participants that are already on the plan, as well as, um, our dependents and anyone that we deem necessary to receive, um, the vaccination. So this is, um, a legal procedure to be able to allow us to do that, um, outside of our current employees.
Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. Uh, one quick question for me. What would you say? We've already vaccinated a number of employees or that hasn't started yet?
It, it hasn't started yet to begin to administer. We, they stand ready. They have the, uh, vaccines in place. Uh, we have put out communication and for those appointment slots, so, um, we're ready. But we're just, um, we have not pushed the button on any, uh, administering any at this time. Uh, we have appointment slots open up for Monday, April nineteenth, so we hope to have, to begin, um, on that date.
And if we pass this in June, we'll also be able to vaccinate employees, dependents?
Yes, sir.
That are on the health plan?
That are on the health plan. Our part-time employees that are not on the health plan, our mayor and council, just whatever group of, uh, participants that we authorize would be able to be vaccinated. Um, there will be, um, a test station and things of that nature for CareHere to be able to move forward. But yes, we would not limit that to just our planned participants.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor, do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment, maybe a question. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. I wanted to commend you and, um, Public Health and CareHere for expediting this whole process. And the city manager for the entire Douglasville team bringing this information together to help us, uh, to get some of our employees and the dependents vaccinated. That's such a blessing. Um, so the question that I had is in, um, relationship to insurance. Today, I had my second vaccine at the, um, Health Department, and so they asked for your insurance card. And so I'm not certain, and my daughter had to have her second vaccine on campus, and so, um, at Kennesaw. So they asked for her insurance card as well. But initially, when I went to the mall, they did not. So do, when they ask for your, because she was kind of apprehensive. She's like, Mommy, they're asking for my insurance. Do they bill insurance or because we're with CareHere, it is not billed? Or when they have, ask for your insurance, they do bill your insurance? Is that correct?
I imagine that that's just for tracking purposes. We are not, um, there is no cost to receive, um, the COVID vaccine through our insurance for our employees. There will also be no cost for anyone else that we, um, authorize to use, um, those. We have pass-through cost structure with CareHere that's already built in. So there will be, there will be no cost, um, from a CareHere standpoint, a Douglasville standpoint. As far as, um, any other entities that are administering, uh, it's my guess that they're, they're using that insurance card to track who they're administering the vaccine, um, through. But there is no, there should be no charge.
There shouldn't be a cost. Okay. So, Ms. C, Mayor, did you have a comment?
No, Ms. Austin Bing is correct. Um, entities that basically provide the vaccine can charge back to the federal government. So if there's a tracking mechanism to know that you've received the vaccine, they can get reimbursed for that.
And just if I can add.
My experience.
From my experience, um, I had to give my insurance card on my second dose. And my insurance company was billed for administering the vaccine, but not for the vaccine itself.
Okay. Because I didn't give it the first time. It just made me a little confused because I, I mean, I'm on the Community Services Board, and we, um, had the site as the mall, but we couldn't get in before our, say, the city and say the county before next week. So they sent us to the Public Health and they asked for the card. I was just a little confused about that. Yes, ma'am.
I had, both of my shots were at Walgreens, not meaning to plug them, but, but I wasn't asked for an insurance card on either, either occasion. So I think it just, that seems to depend. I don't know why some do and why some don't.
I think it's the entity's choice to be able to get reimbursed for that service.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate the feedback. I didn't mean to open up the floor for, I just was a little bit confused and didn't know if we were gonna have the same requirement for, because you said you don't have to be on our insurance, if we would have the same requirement for a dependence of the, of the City of Douglasville.
No, we will not require that. CareHere has, um, a census list, um, for our employees that are on the plan. If they, um, so choose to do, you know, that, that process, but they're not requiring that to, um, administer the vaccine.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Davis?
Yes, uh, Ms. Bing, will you know which vaccine you'd be giving out?
Thank you for asking. It will be Moderna.
For me?
Moderna.
Thank you.
Anybody else, uh, question, comment? Councilwoman Member Danley?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add one, one thing, um, to, just, um, for your reference. For the, uh, second dosage, um, those procedures, um, CareHere does expect to receive more vaccine. It has been partnering with Department of Public Health, um, even for the, for the, for the first round. Um, but they will assist, um, our employees and our dependents and part-time employees with, uh, registering for the second, um, for the second phase as well. So they will be, um, in, in a customer service capacity as well to help them do that.
Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. And if there are no other comments, I'd like to place this also on the consent agenda for Monday. If that's okay? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. Um, Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight on the Personnel and Organization. Madam Mayor, that's all I have tonight on the personnel and organization.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Personnel, HR Team. We appreciate your presentations this evening. We'll move on then to Item Number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's shared by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight under Planning and Development. First item was tabled from March 15, 2021, to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from PUD Planned Unit Development District to LI Light Industrial District in the Quality Growth Development Overlay District for 22.17 acres. It's located at 1330, 1340, and 1346 Mount Vernon Road, Land Lot 715, District 18, Section 2, Parcels 5, 8, and 15. The application is by LBA Realty, care of Mr. Doug Dillard, and Ms. Patrice Williams is going to present that for us. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. This item was originally heard on March 11 and 15. The applicant requested that the item be tabled to give them an opportunity to meet with the residents. With this application, the applicant is requesting a rezoning under the City of Douglasville Unified Development Ordinance, Section 12.08.05. The applicant's narrative states that the purpose of this request is to develop a warehouse distribution center. Since our last meeting, we learned from county staff that Sweetwater Park prefers light industrial in the area. Upon speaking with a representative of the park, this information was confirmed. We are providing an email exchange between the zoning administrator, Mr. Ron Anderson, and park staff. The applicant is with us tonight to provide you with their proposed changes to the original application.
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. We'll go forward then with our public hearing, and we would like to hear, first of all, from the applicant. We do have a handout, I think that each of you have, this Item 21-102, as a handout that would show some changes to the original plan, and they have explained that very well, but I'd like to hear from the applicant. Sir, if you'd again give us your name and address for the record as in last month, we look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you all again. My name is Baxter Russell. I'm an attorney with Dillard Sellers in Atlanta, Georgia, 1776 Peachtree Street Northwest. Here tonight, of course, on behalf of the applicant, LBA Realty, presenting our request for a rezoning from PUD to light industrial with a revised site plan, as you mentioned, in order to develop a Class A warehouse and distribution center now at a size of 262,515 square feet. With me tonight, we have Mr. Dave Paquette, as well as John Wise and Sid Howman, with Paulson Mitchell, able to answer any engineering questions. So as we previously discussed, and as I believe you understand, we are looking to develop a warehouse facility at one of the last undeveloped parcels at the western edge of the warehouse corridor of Blair's Bridge Road and Lynch Road. Now while I say that, what we've learned through this process is that our parcel is very unique and has unique challenges, particularly how we impact those single-family homes across the street from us. Last time I was here, I requested that you table a decision on this matter in order to allow us time to work on our site plan and to meet with those neighbors who could be affected. I'm happy to report that we did have a positive meeting with the neighbors across the street from us, the Jenny Lane neighbors. I know one of them is here this evening, and there may be more joining us electronically. I'm also happy to report that the client team, the engineering team, has worked to modify our site plan to address the comments and concerns from those neighbors, as well as the concerns we heard from council itself. What I'd like to do at this time is just walk through some of those changes, as you mentioned in the packet that you have, and what I will do is I will toggle back and forth for anyone who's joining us electronically or members in the audience between the site plan we originally proposed and our new revised site plan. So you have here on the screen the old site plan. The big issues that were raised and that we faced with this project relate to, one, traffic and safety along Mount Vernon Road, as well as the landscaping and visibility of our site itself along Mount Vernon Road, and then, of course, as staff discussed, that I will not add a lot on unless you have any questions, but the impact on the park itself. So walking through our site plan changes, as you heard in my introduction, one of the largest changes we made was actually reducing the building size itself, removing 37,485 square feet from the building. What this does, of course, first of all, is decrease the intensity of the warehouse use itself. It also provides more frontage space along Mount Vernon, where we have more ability to do more landscaping, pull the parking lot away from the street, but then also add more buffer space and a larger detention pond on the southern end along that southern boundary. The second, and maybe one of the most obvious when you look at the difference between the two plans, the second big change was we have removed the two full-access entrances that we previously had on Mount Vernon Road. The only entrance that we are now showing is emergency access only. It has a gate with a Knox box able to be entered by emergency vehicles if it's needed, but this will not be a regularly-used, regularly-accessed entrance on Mount Vernon Road. Of course, we believe this greatly enhances and improves the safety of this site, as the neighbors were concerned, as council was concerned along Mount Vernon, as there won't be any traffic, even we were originally proposing automobiles accessing the parking lot there, there will not be any traffic, regular traffic flow unless it's an emergency vehicle. The third change that I'll mention is our Lynch Road access. So now we've moved the automobile parking entrance and access to a full-access entrance off of Lynch Road that will service both the truck court, as well as the automobile parking lot. But what we have done with this, with this access point is we do have restrictive measures in place in order to require that the truck traffic, the industrial traffic, travel east down Lynch toward the Thornton Road exit, rather than encouraging them to come down Mount Vernon. We have right-turn-out-only signs, but we also have an overhead bar on the left-turn-out exit, so that trucks cannot physically, unless they ram through a overhead bar, turn left at that access point. The fourth change that I'll mention, modification, as you can see pretty clearly, is we have reduced the size of the automobile parking lot from 300 spaces to 173 spaces. We feel this is more in line with the amount of parking that's required for our use in our site, reduce the physical number of spaces, but it also reduces the physical width of that lot, as I mentioned, bringing the parking lot away from Mount Vernon Road. It allows us to do more landscaping along Mount Vernon. Lastly, mentioning the landscaping along Mount Vernon, we have increased this landscaping. The landscaping closest to the road, we're now proposing a 25-foot landscaping strip that's planted beyond the standards required by the code and the overlay code, with also a 5-foot berm. But what our great engineering team has been able to figure out from touring the site and making some modifications is that we now have a pretty extensive tree save area with the amount of trees that are there and are healthy. We're able to save some of those, increase the buffering with the natural vegetation that's there, and now we're looking at a distance of 100 to 130 feet between the right-of-way and where the parking lot begins, and then, of course, a further distance to the building beyond. I'm going to turn it over now in just a moment to Mr. Dave Paquette, but just in closing of my section, just reminder, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening, would reserve any time for rebuttal. I want to thank you all for your comments, staff for their work on this, and of course, the neighborhood for their comments to help us create and draft a better plan for everyone that we hope you'll be pleased with. We've made a good faith effort to respond to your concerns, to respond to the concerns of the neighbors, and to address those concerns with our site plan changes. So in summary, I'll turn it over to Dave now, and again, happy to answer any questions. There's a few more slides that we don't have to go through. You've got a summary, though, of all the changes we made, if that's helpful to review as well.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Baxter. Mayor, Council, thank you again for taking a little more time with us this evening. I'm not going to articulate again what Baxter's already presented.
Sir, could you, I'm sorry, could you give us your name and address for the record, just for those that might be viewing us?
Of course. Dave Paquette, 353 North Clark, Chicago, Illinois. Again, not going to regurgitate what Baxter's already told you. We just want to say thank you, open it up for questions, and we do have our engineering team here who will do what they can to answer any of those questions by council and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start our public portion, as far as allowing others to come and speak, is there anyone, Madam Mayor, or Dr. Burdanley, or anyone that would have any question or comment? The applicant at this time. Yes, Madam Mayor? Go ahead, Dr. Burdanley. You go ahead.
Oh, no, Madam Mayor can go. Thank you, Councilman Adams.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, well, we're doing a dance. I guess I'll start first on my card. Thank you so much, Attorney Russell and Mr. Paquette, the engineers and the applicant for coming in this evening, and I wanted to really, to show appreciation that you all have done a lot of heavy lifting, of course, with Councilman Estes and the neighbors and the community, and, you know, Jenny Lane and all the residents. So thank you for addressing a lot of those issues, the aesthetics issues, which you talked about lastly, which makes a big difference, you know, with landscaping and the traffic flow, trying to mitigate traffic to have it flow a little bit better for safety issues. We appreciate that, and just really working along with the community to help, as you've said, to have a better product. So we just appreciate that you all were being amenable to do that and working with the community, again, all, everyone involved, including staff, inclusive of staff, to come up with a product that we can really wrap our arms around and try to support, especially if the community supports it. So thank you again for coming in this evening. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Burdanley?
Thank you, Councilman Adams. I echo the mayor's comments. I just wanted to say, gentlemen and staff, you've done very well. Actually, it'd be nice to have developers to meet with the residents on the front end. It makes things so much easier, and I'm very impressed with your presentation, and I am waiting to hear the comments of the residents as well, but thank you for your time. You've put some really good work into it. It makes a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burdanley. Other comments of council or questions that council may have? Councilman Estes, I'll see you hitting your mic. Go ahead.
Yes, just very briefly, and I may make additional comments after any citizen speak, but I also would like to commend you guys and the citizens and staff, because this has been just an exemplary example of how developers can work with citizens to address issues that are brought up by the citizens and by council. I mean, every point that you have gone through, Baxter, those were all brought up at our previous meetings, and you all did the work with the community. So I thank you for that, and I look forward to hearing from the community members.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. Any other?
Councilman Adams?
Yes, Councilman Davis, go ahead.
With this covered out, how did you bring the community together? How did you reach out to the community, and how many did you reach out to?
Yes, sir. So after the, I believe that was, it would have been the voting session when we came and requested tabling, that was when we had the most community members come to the actual meeting, where I got to see them and got to speak with them after that meeting, and there were a few leaders there that I exchanged contact information with, and in the days that followed, just reached out to them. We looked at some dates to set up a physical face-to-face community meeting. We met last Tuesday at, I believe it's the Ike Owens Community Center. Great facility, by the way, for my first time going there. Great facility, great for meetings, anyone that's listening and needs a meeting. We met there, and what we had the opportunity, excuse me, opportunity to do at that time was, we had worked on some of these changes already, particularly the drives, changing those. So we had the chance to present the changes that we'd already made, but then also hear feedback from the neighbors at that meeting. With the sign-in sheet that we had, I believe we had approximately 15 neighbors show up in person, but what was great is one of the neighborhood leaders brought his laptop, so we had a Zoom set up that way, a video conference. So there were a few members who also joined that way, so it was probably in the range of 15 to 20 members. I will say, just so that, you know, everything's upfront, we, there may still be some concerns from the neighbors. I don't want to portray that we are lockstep, meeting in the minds in every way with them, but we have done our best, as I said, to meet some of their concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Coach White, go ahead.
Like everybody else said, I'm grateful that y'all worked hard to work with the community, and that's not always the case in a lot of places. I think that's becoming a standard here in Douglasville, developers that are coming in, and so I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of how closely our staff works to get things done with developers. One of my concerns, one of my favorite places in the whole wide world, Sweetwater Park, and I was kind of concerned about the impact. I was surprised to discover that Sweetwater Park welcomes light industrial as neighbors. I was surprised by that, and, you know, so some of my fears have been put to rest. So anyway, appreciate y'all's hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Is anyone else? Okay, at this time, then I'm going to open the floor for those that may be here that would like to speak either for or against, and I'll ask our Assistant City Manager, do we have anyone on virtually to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would speak in person? Please come forward if you're speaking. First of all, let's speak in support of, and if not, then we'll go in objection to, if you just identify yourself and give us your position, please. Thank you for coming.
I messed up. Good afternoon. My name is Yolanda Walker. I am a resident at 1451 Mount Vernon Road, so right across the street from where it's coming. Now that I'm in the meeting, I'm kind of torn, so, you know, we were, I will commend Baxter and the team, they did meet with us. I was a part of that meeting when they met with us, and we did have a lot of concerns. Some of those concerns have been eased today, but there's still some. You know, I live right across the street, and while there's, you know, some greenery there, I don't know how quickly that greenery is going to be where I can't see a warehouse. It's really hard to hide a warehouse. So we're still concerned about property value. That's a big issue for us, because we're right across the street. The other thing is the traffic. It was the first time I heard about the bars, because we talked a lot about, you know, the traffic turning on Lynch Road, so that was the first time we heard that today. So we can ease that, but we get a lot of trucks, and we have a lot of concern about the trucks coming down Mount Vernon Road. So while they may not turn, they may, if there's an accident, they get off at Lee and come down, or not, Fabrin Road, and sometimes come down the other way on Mount Vernon. And we've had trucks turn over, so it's real concern about safety on Mount Vernon. If you notice, if you've been over there lately, for those of you who visit Sweetwater, there's still that marquee that's down, because we hear those accidents at night, and it scares us when we hear the accidents. So there's still a concern about the traffic and the visibility of seeing a warehouse across the street from our homes. So that's all I have for now, but I do appreciate all of the hard work that's gone into getting us this far. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Are there others? Coach, did you have another comment?
Well, I was just going to say in response, I share some of her concerns about truck traffic on that road, not the proposed new neighbors, but just traffic in general. I'm down Mount Vernon a lot, because I'm over at Sweetwater a lot, but, and that's something that's going to have to be addressed by the county, those concerns, because that's a county road, but I share some of your concerns, madam, about truck traffic especially up and down that road, because there's, you know, there's only one way to go, and they're all going, there's no place for them to go other than back to Highway 92. So anyway, I don't know what can be done about that, but I share her concern.
Councilman Estes had another comment.
As somebody who is very sensitive to the issue of trucks in proximity to their home, I totally understand that, and while I know this particular project is not responsible for the problem, and you all are doing everything, it looks like, or you're discussing doing everything you can to prevent it from being aggravated by this development, I would request that if this is approved, that you all do try and add some pressure to the county to see about getting some traffic issues at least discussed, if not... to the county to see about getting the, some traffic issues at least discussed, if not addressed.
If I can speak to that, Councilman, I heard that as a, as a charge at the last meeting, to try at least do our best to reach out to the county and their transportation department. We've done that. We have reached out to the transportation department of the county to, for a few reasons. One is to see what solutions could be possible, particularly at the corner there of Lynch Road and Mount Vernon, where you've, if you had someone trying to take a left there, I know from speaking with the residents that that's an issue that they've raised, is the stacking that occurs there. So, we've reached out to the county to see what options are possible with the, with the right-of-way width, but also, in addition to talking about specific solutions for our project, on behalf of the neighbors to raise awareness about the traffic issues here. Because what I learned since the last meeting is, I went through the county's future transportation planning documents that are currently on the books, and I know that they're working on updating that plan right now. There's not enough attention paid to this roadway and to this area. So, what we wanted to do was wave that flag and raise that issue as a new project comes in. So, that's something that we've, we've done, is to try to reach out, and will continue to do as, as development, if it should move forward, moves forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baxter, and thank you, Councilman Estes. Just a note there, and I know that most of you all in attendance, obviously, are aware of this, but we have been in this position prior at other times, where we have situations and rezonings and annexations and so forth, that, that just happened to sit on the boundary line between the city and the county. And so, we, as, as representatives of our constituents in the city, we have responsibility, of course, to them, but also, we want to be sensitive to those that, just because they live outside the limits of our city, they are not, their concerns do not go unnoticed and taken into consideration. And I appreciate the professionalism that everyone has had. Mr. Russell, your team, and also the neighborhood, because I think you have done a good job in trying to listen and plan and make changes. And I'm glad to see this amount of progress that has already been made. Madam Mayor, did you have another comment?
I did. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Russell, have you had any success with reaching, with the inquiry to?
No, ma'am.
Wow. Ms. Williams, could you make a point of talking to Transportation Mr. Valentine? And I will call Commissioner Robinson, who is over Transportation, and Dr. Ramona Jackson-Jones, the Chair, to talk about this issue. I'm disappointed that...
I've reached out to Mr. Valentine directly, and I know he's a very busy man. So, I mean, my messages may have been lost in the system along the way, but we have reached out to him. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll personally do something.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Walker, bringing it to our attention. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, and I mean, we will, as Baxter and staff, reach out to the county. You know, we will offer our services to help, along with our engineer, to try to coordinate something and what might make sense at that intersection for all parties, our development and the neighbors.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Seeing none, then I will close this portion of that, of the item as far as the public hearing. And we will come back on Monday with this information and hope to make a decision on that item for you. Thank you all for being here. We'll move on to Item B, tabled from April 5, 2021. Consider a request for approval for a development plan for Sweetwater Point for 5.062 acres at Stewart Mill, Stewart Parkway and Douglas Boulevard, located in Land Lot 130, District 2, Section 5, Parcel 90, for plans dated February 18, 2021. Application by Alan Collins. Ms. Williams is going to present that for us.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. Sweetwater Point is an age-restricted community comprised of 96 units in one three-story building. The subject property was approved for change in zoning, general commercial, to PRD, planned residential district, for 5.062 acres at Stewart Parkway and Douglas Boulevard. During our last round of meetings, the applicant and staff requested this item be tabled to address concerns of fire. At that time, the pulpit walls were beyond the 30 feet allowed by the fire department. Since our last meeting, the applicant was able to make changes that satisfies the fire department. With that being said, city staff has reviewed the application and attachments, and has determined that the proposed plans for the age-restricted community meets the development requirements of the UDL. And as you can see from your attachments, they have provided a new rendering for the development.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I will open the floor for questions or comments, and I would like to start with Dr. Burdanley, since she is not here with us, just in case she may need to check out. Dr. Burdanley, do you have any comment concerning this item?
I do not, and you are absolutely right. I can't hold anymore, so I will see you all on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burdanley.
Bye-bye.
Anyone have any comment or question? Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Williams and the applicants. We appreciate you all jumping through hoops to try to make this work. We apologize for any inconvenience, but we thank you for your time in presenting a beautiful rendering. And we're excited to see what you have. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, any others? Mayor Proton, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to express my appreciation with the developer and working with the city council and trying to, sort of given a tough hand there, dealing with the fire code requirements, but I think, you know, I appreciate the effort that's being made, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Thank you, sir. I just call attention to page number eight in our packet, I believe, is the updated rendering with the parapet walls actually having been removed. And that will give you an idea of the type of building, the facades and everything that they are planning to do. So, if there are no other questions or comments, Ms. Jackson, there was no one online. I'm sorry. And please don't let me run past anyone if I fail to ask. If not, then we will take this up for a vote on Monday to approve this development plan. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
We move on to Item C.
They were here, they wanted to say anything, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. If you all had information that you'd like to provide in addition, then I welcome those comments. I'm sorry, I did not allow that.
We're good.
I know you came all the way here. You don't want to say anything. Look at real short.
I'll give you a quick update.
I can tell, the look on your, through your eyes and the mask, you want to say something.
Madam Mayor, it's a pleasure. Thank you, and counsel. Very excited and...
Sir, name and address for the record. I'm so sorry to have to remind you of that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Dennis Richards, 260 Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. Just want to say thank you all very much for your support thus far. Very excited, moving very quickly towards the closing, so looking forward to getting this closed this summer. Excited to have you all at the groundbreaking.
Thank you.
Take care.
Appreciate it so much, folks. Okay, Item C. Consider a request for a revised plat approval for Douglasville Crossroads for the purpose of revising lot lines for Track 4 for 2.51 acres at 1,000 Lennon Coal Drive, Land Lot 161, District 2, Section 5, Parcel 94. Application by HRC Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant, HRC Incorporated, is seeking a revised final plat approval for Douglasville Crossroads for the purpose of revising lot lines for Traks 4, Track 4, for 2.51 acres at 1,000 Lennon Coal Drive. This revision replaces the plat of Douglasville Crossroads by Robert Armstrong, dated 10/26/1999, recorded in Plat Book 41, Pages 92 and 93. According to the memo provided by Erin McCullough with HRC, this request is to separate and clearly distinguish property lines from mortgage lenders, so it's a housekeeping item. City staff has reviewed the application and attachments, and has determined that the proposed plat meets final plat requirements of the UDL. Staff recommends approval of this revised final plat.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do we have comments or questions concerning the item? You can see in our packet, this item, page number four, basically the shaded area, Ms. Williams, is what is involved. And I see that we have Mr. Walter Rowe with HRC, I'm sorry, with Hartley Rowe and Fowler, not with HRC, with us tonight. May be able to answer any questions if you all may have any. Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson, there's no one here online. Okay. Please remind me. Any comment or question concerning the item? We'll move right along. Now, we've got plenty to do. Thank you. That's all that we, have no comment or question on that item. We'll move forward. We'll take it up on Monday. We'll go to Item D. Consider a request for revised plat, final plat approval for Concourse Center for the purpose of revising lot lines for lots nine and 10 for 4.09 acres at 7101 and 7055 Concourse Parkway, Land Lot 161, District 2, Section 5, Parcels 10 and 44. Again, application by HRC Incorporated. Ms. Williams, it looks like some, similar in the same area. Go ahead.
Very similar. The second item by HRC is seeking a revised final plat approval for Concourse Central, Central for the purpose of revising lot lines at 7101 and 755 Concourse Parkway. This revision replaces the plat of Concourse Center by Paul McInnis, dated 7/15/1997, recorded in Plat Book 23, Page 89. According to the memo provided by Erin McCullough, this request is to separate and clearly distinguish property lines from mortgage lenders. Staff does approve this request.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Good thing, Mr. Jackson, I want to take them both together. My assumption is, if it's not correct, this is really just a, like, house cleaning for, for, for the subdivision, essentially.
Is housecleaning on both sides.
Yeah, okay. There's not really, nothing is being affected really in terms of usage of the property or setbacks or anything like, or zoning. It's just really cleaning up the property lines.
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Yes, sir. It would appear to me that they would be doing what I would, what I would have called in the old days, a as-built, as to what's actually there, and make sure that the right-of-ways are in place, and the mortgage company has an interest as they need to have in the properties with a, with a correct legal description, is the way it appears. Mr. Rowe, would you agree with that?
Next, Ray.
Okay. Any other question or comment? All righty. Then we'll take that up on Monday. Also, we have two other items. Item E. Consider a request for revised final plat approval for Riverside West Phase 2 for the purpose of identifying the Mason House within Track A and removing Track E on 355.279 acres at North River Road, Land Lot 166, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 1, 2, and 4, and Land Lot 173, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 2 and 11, and Land Lot 998, District 18, Section 2, Parcel 1, application by Brian Cardoza with Rooker Riverside LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. Before I forget, Mr. Cardoza is on the line with us tonight, so if you have any questions for him, he's available. But he is actually seeking a revised final plat approval to show the location of the Mason House within Track A and to remove Track E for 359.259 acres at North River Road. The original final plat was approved on December 7, 2020. However, the Mason House was mistakenly left off. This revision replaces the plat recorded in Plat Book 41, Pages 93 and 92. City staff has reviewed the application and attachments, and has determined that the proposed plat meets final plat requirements of the UDL. Staff recommends approval of the revised final plat.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll recognize Mr. Cardoza, just to see if he has any additional comments for us. Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening. How are you?
We're great. How are you?
Good, good, thank you. I don't have anything for Brian Cardoza, Rooker Riverside, 445 Bishop Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30318. I don't have any additional comments, but I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. We'll open the floor to any comment or question. Does anyone have any concerning this, again, housekeeping item to correct the final plat? Seeing none, then we will take this up on Monday. Thank you, Mr. Cardoza, and we'll take this up on Monday.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Item F. Consider a request for final plat approval for the purpose of subdividing into two lots, 38.782 acres at 1551 Riverside Parkway, Land Lot 176, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 1, application by LMC Riverside Holdings LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant is with us on Zoom tonight. The applicant, LMC Riverside Holdings LLC, is requesting a final plat approval for the purpose of splitting 38.782 acres into two tracts at 1551 Riverside Parkway. Emblem formerly presented as the Preserve is a multifamily development currently under building review. The project will be developed on Track 2. Track 1 will be used for a second phase of the development. City staff has reviewed the application and attachments, and has determined that the proposed plan meets the requirements of the UDL. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll recognize the applicant in case they have anything to add before we have any question or comment. Who is with us?
Mr. Ray Crocker.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes, sir.
Could you give us your name and, name and address for the record, and we welcome any comments?
Yes, sir. Ray Crocker, 55 Chafin Road, Roswell, Georgia. I don't have any further comment, but can answer questions if there are any.
Thank you. One question I have is, I want to make sure, and this may be for a question for staff. Ms. Williams, could you tell us what the proposed plan is as to what is already being worked on? Everything that we had approved thus far, I believe, did you tell me was already proposed in the plan to stay on Phase 1 on that property to begin with? So, there's no change in the development plan?
No change in the development. No, he just wants to split that parcel for a potential future development.
Okay. Mr. Crocker, is that basically what your plan is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments, anyone? Okay, seeing none, then we will take this up on Monday. And thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Crocker.
Thank you.
Last item, Madam Mayor.
Wow.
Refer to the Planning Commission a proposed ordinance to adopt a new City of Douglasville zoning map. Application is by the City of Douglasville. Ms. Williams, tell us about that.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. As you can see from your attachment, in the past couple of years, or year and a half, you all have rezoned, annexed about 41 different parcels. And so, it's time for us to update our map. And so, we are requesting that this be passed over to the Planning Commission, and they'll have a look at it, and then they'll send it back to Mayor and Council to vote on it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. When she first mentioned this to me a couple of days ago, I cringed. I said, wait a minute, we're not about to make a bunch of changes, are we? I wanted to make sure it was just to update what we have already done. And obviously, as you've mentioned, 40 some odd parcels, we need, we do need an update. Question, comment? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate that. We'll take it up then. If there is no, if there is no reason not to, I would like to say, if we could, I would like to have at least one item on the consent agenda for Monday.
[laughing]
Thank you all. Appreciate that very much. Madam Mayor, that's all we have.
Mr. Chairman, I am impressed. You had an extensive committee items, and he went, can you believe that? Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to item number 11, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We also have no business this evening.
Sounds good. Thank you. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh. Is your microphone on?
Okay, we have one item this afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
Hold a public hearing to consider a request in the change in agent outlet manager for the alcoholic beverages licensed for the on-premises sale and consumption of wine and malt beverage and spirits listed at the following establishment. License GMRI INC. DBA, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, number 1531, location 6710 Douglas Boulevard. Current agent outlet manager, Mario Caccella. Proposed agent outlet manager, Kelvin Williams. The required fees has been paid into the finance department. And Kelvin Williams, if you're here, will you come down?
Okay.
Good afternoon, sir. State your name and, and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and the council. My name is Kelvin Williams, 6710 Douglas Boulevard, The Olive Garden Restaurant.
Good. And how long you been the manager?
I've been there since September, end of September.
Okay. And how do you go about training your employees for alcohol and...
It's, the process we use when they first come to work with us, their training starts, but they're not allowed to do anything with alcohol until they actually go and get their permits to serve the alcoholic beverages. Everyone in the building has to have those permits if they're doing anything with alcohol.
That's good. Mayor and council?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Mr. Williams. It's good to have you here. How's business?
Business is, is good. It's been getting a lot better.
Okay, good.
Staffing, not so much, but business is, well...
Well, if you have brought some salads with you this evening, now just... Well, if you have brought some salads with you this evening, no, just kidding.
As I was sitting over there listening, I was like, I'm pretty sure everybody's probably kind of hungry right now. I wish I was.
Well, thank you so much, and now you've explained how your individuals are, have the education or training before they become servers, how do you check for the people that are, you know, purchasing food in Olive Garden?
Okay, there's two phases to it. We have our little computers that are on the, what we call Zios, that are on the tables. Guests can order beverages from that, but even when they do, it doesn't bring up the table or come from the bar until the actual server is able to go over there and verify their IDs and make sure that everything is correct before it's brought to the table. And the second phase is they ID anyone who looks like they're younger than 40. Now, the standard practice for most restaurants is if they look younger than 30, that you, we're like, we're not taking chances with that. That's too, we want them to look, I guess, elderly, basically.
Look like me.
So if they don't, if they don't fit the bill, it's like, I told service, if you're not comfortable, I don't care if they look 80. If you're not comfortable, ID them.
Okay, thank you. So that really protects the patrons and yourself. Chief, have we had any concerns at Olive Garden?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other council members? You sure? Going once? Okay.
No takers.
And I've seen the sign that says hiring. Is staff, is staff coming back to work now?
Yes, we have a lot of staff that's coming back to work.
That's good.
The thing with staffing is our business, we're basically at half capacity because of the CDC guidelines, but our business is coming back a lot quicker than the staff is, so.
Yes.
There's been some challenges, but we're moving forward.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for your application, and if there's no other question, we're going to hold a public hearing, and the public hearing is five minutes for those who speak against the establishment, and five for those who speak for us. So at this time, we're holding a public hearing for five minutes for those who speak against. Like we have no takers, anyone online? Okay, five minutes for those who speak in favor. Like we have no one, sir, so we'll close the public hearing, and thank you, and come back on Monday.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
And we might take that salad. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank y'all. That's all to have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee Vice Chair, Councilmember Davis.
May I have my mic keep going out?
Okay, it's okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Do we have any other business to come before committees, I mean, not committees, but legislative work session tonight from council members? Only thing I wanted to announce is that we do have, the Chamber of Commerce and the Council for Quality Growth is sponsoring the state of the city and state of the county, and I believe it's next Wednesday, the 21st, and it's at 11 o'clock here at the conference center. So if you're not able to attend in person, it is in person, if you're not able to attend in person, it will be televised as well, and I don't know the platform, but the chamber is sponsoring it, so that's the only announcement that I had. Any announcements from council members? Okay, so we'll move on then to updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Lynn Woodward.
No business tonight in New York.
Thank you, ma'am. The chief is back there. Chief Sparks, you have anything?
Yes, ma'am. On April the 20th, at 12:30, we will have our third, I think, food, free food distribution at the police department. April the 20th, 12:30, come on by the police department, and we'll have some free food to give away.
Okay, that's Tuesday at 12:30 at the police department. Municipal building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, chief, food distribution. Anything else, chief?
No, ma'am.
That's it? Okay, good. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton, welcome back.
Yes, ma'am. I sent you all an email about activities and opening and city operations, so as of May 3rd, I think I've heard from most of you all, we will be back to business as usual as best that we can, as far as the July 4th parade staff is recommending that we withhold that again for this year due to just not being able to manage or know what the crowd expectation would be like, but we will proceed with fireworks for this year. We do have that contract, we feel like people can watch fireworks from their homes or from their cars and do that in a safe manner, where we don't think that we can really manage a crowd for the parade. We will introduce back in activities, small events inclusive of things at our parks, so again, city operations will run pretty much 100% just at more of a limited capacity, but we will be open to the public. I will have Chelsea Jackson come up just to give you all a highlight of what's in the governor's orders, and particularly as it pertains to our future meetings. If you all know that we are under an emergency order, which means that it does allow for virtual attendance, but Chelsea's going to explain to you what happens when and if that emergency order expires.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As Ms. Hampton stated, the public health state of emergency does end on April 30th. There's a chance that the governor can and will renew it, but with decreasing guidelines, staff is anticipating and gearing up that he will not renew, and it'll possibly end. So with that being said, the guidelines set forth as it relates to facilities are now reduced to 42 inches, as I stated in the committee's meeting, which is about three and a half feet, with no capacity limit except for those set forth by the fire marshal and whatnot. So for city and council meetings and board and authority meetings, what this basically means is that staff will continue to use technol, technical, hard word to say, technological, sorry, thanks, Ms. Hampton, solutions when possibly to reduce the person-to-person interaction, but when the state of emergency isn't renewed on April 30th, that means that council members will be unable to participate on a virtual platform unless there's a quorum physically, or if there's a health condition that permits them to actually come in. Also, Ms. Woodward can speak more to that, but council members are allowed two virtual meetings in a calendar year, so they can use that as long as a quorum is physically.
Okay. Ms. Woodward, do you want to, the same thing for WSA, you only have two a year, you can do virtual call-in or something.
Right, and I don't have anything to add on top of what Ms. Jackson just presented.
Okay.
So we will just keep you all posted as the orders. Ms. Jackson and Jason Post are the ones that typically read the orders when we get them and just notify you. You know, there's a good chance that he will extend it again, however, as Ms. Jackson said, the governor is continuously lessening the restrictions, so I just don't see that those are going to probably carry forward much past the summer. So I think our time is fairly limited in this capacity if things continue to trend the way that they are.
Okay, I'll open up for council to have comments, three, how are we going to look here? Is this three feet or how?
You all are good. You all can stay this way if you want to, but I would think that inclusive also of the CDC that that is going to shrink as well, so you all will just have to let us know when you're ready and comfortable to sit closer.
Yeah, I don't know if the council members, if you feel alienated outside of the.
Yeah, be cautious. See, you gotta be cautious.
Okay.
Oh, gosh.
Councilmember Adams, you raised your hand.
I just wanted to ask our city manager, if we continue along this line, is there a possibility we would at least be able to go back with the Labor Day Parade with the Shrine Temple sponsorship? I don't know whether they handle that.
I'm thinking, I think Councilman Adams, that the Shriners will possibly want to do that if things continue to progress in a positive way.
I can assure you, I've already had conversations.
Yeah, you know, and again, it's, they do that parade, it's a lot easier, of course, you know, they have a lot more volunteers, you know, ours is strictly with staff, so it's a little bit harder for us to manage in some ways, so, and of course, it would be, July 4th would be a smaller parade because, of course, it's municipal election, but it's, you know, definitely with law enforcement, limited staff, it's just something that is just probably for us at this point during the summer not in our best interest to do.
Did you sidestep my question, or what would your recommendation be?
My recommendation, well, my recommendation would be definitely for you all to consider if the Shriners want to move forward. I mean, of course, they put the parade on, we're there for public safety purposes, but as far as setup and lineup, you know, they reach out to Greg, but a staff from outside of any other staff, we're not involved, so it really would be at your discretion to move forward based on what the climate would be.
I'm just speaking from my own personal desire to see us come out as the summer closes and begin to get back into some sense of normalcy in the community, if the numbers will allow that. I'm not advocating at all that we push our limits there, but I just wanted to hear your input on that, and I'm sure it's all going to be based upon how things are as far as what's going on then, but I know that I have already had conversation at least once with some of the folks heavily involved in that, and I'm just curious.
And I would say, you know, for the Veterans Day Parade, you know, the county has taken a very strict approach, so I would say that they probably wouldn't, they may not be doing the Veterans Day Parade, but the Shriners, I just think that their volunteer base is just huge. They're able to just do things, I think, even that we can't do because of their volunteer support.
I just like the idea of the city kind of leading the way, showing everybody how to get back to normal.
Yes, sir. Any other comments? Oh, Councilman Davis?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor and city manager, as baseball and all the other sports have geared up and we're opening back up, will the park security, will their days change back to normal Monday through Sunday? Right now, I think they're Friday through Sunday, so with everything opening back up, more people are out, so.
We'll be discussing the park security agreement next month, I think, because that agreement is coming up. You know, Mr. Landrum will talk to you all about, you know, where he feels as though the need will be. I will tell you that, you know, with all of the sports cranking back up, we are still looking at smaller numbers. I mean, we're not going to have as many teams as we typically have, mainly it's just slowly gradually getting into things, so he'll have to make the recommendation as to whether or not there'll be a need for the security. I will tell you, the chief shared with me some numbers on how things are going, and I know, of course, we've been in the pandemic, but it appears that for the past six months, we've had business-as-usual calls for public safety, so nothing that you wouldn't expect from.
Can we get a report?
I can email, I can forward that to you.
A report from?
Yeah, and that's from 911.
Okay. So if they, if there was an incident at the park and they did not call 911, then we would not have a record of it?
We would not. I would hope that park security would call 911.
If they were there, from my understanding, there'd been some incidents outside of Friday through Sunday, but all those other days that they were not on duty.
If something were happening with an individual, I would hope that 911 would have been called. I mean, we do have Zone Patrol that frequently attends the park, but if there was an incident, and definitely, yeah, if 911 was not called, our staff, and if staff, if something happens while staff is there, staff notifies, especially for emergency purposes.
Okay, very good.
So they, so we get from Mr. Pearson and 911 call, we get a report?
I can give you Mr. Pearson's report, but what I would suggest to you is that the 911 report is the emergency report. I mean, he may have some notes of things that he runs into, but to me, as far as a public safety matter, I would rely on what's being reported through 911. And it's not to negate the information that he has, but when you're looking at emergency, I look at the 911 calls as what's prompted as far as emergencies.
Okay. Any other comments from the body, let the body? Thank you so much, city manager. Do we have any staff reports?
No, ma'am, we do not.
We have comments from citizens and delegates.